Call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. We will begin tonight's meeting at the request of Mr. Justin Wel from the Potomac District with a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, do we have any students? I see a couple that might be a student age. Students, come on. Yeah, you raise your hand, you're too late. You shouldn't have done that. Students in the crowd, come up. You can stand right there. You can lead us in the pledge. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then afterwards, name, grade, and where you go to school.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Saunders Middle School. Trace Buckley, 6th grade.
We are moving on to the approving of... Hold on, my computer froze. One second. Ah, froze. Don't panic, everybody. Maybe it did. No, there we go. Moving on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams. We're on 12.01.
Mine didn't jump like it was supposed to. Okay. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Thank you. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you.
Vote of 7 yes, 1 no, Deutsch. Motion passed.
And right on to consent, a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to second.
Thank you. Discussion. Ms...
Yes.
Mr. Wilk.
I was just quickly recognized again that April is Autism Awareness Month, especially this hits home with my family. I have an autistic son, but he's doing great things and great progress in Prince William County and I want to commend the child find program that we have implemented. I want to commend the all-day kindergarten program that we have implemented. The early intervention is such a key component for students on the autism spectrum and I just am very excited about the opportunities that are out there with Patty, little Patty, opening up 10 potential classrooms when the addition comes to get more kids early identified to help close those achievement gaps and put those kids on a pathway towards success. So I just want to recognize that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Ralston.
I'd like to speak to 1304 and it's guarding, where am I? Garfield High School, the Auxiliary Committee. Can I get you to stand, please? The committee from Garfield that's going to rename the gym. Okay. Where's my piece of paper? Trying to get everything. Mr., is it Lito?
Lito.
Can you step up to the mic, please? And please explain exactly what we're getting ready to do at Garfield by renaming, by naming the wrestling?
Yeah, we want to, we redid the wrestling room because it was not in very good shape and we wanted to dedicate it to our wrestling coach, Mr. Jack Duncan, who coached a lot of these kids for 20 years and brought, I don't know how many, division championships and regionals and states to there. And we just want to think it would be nice to name the whole wrestling room after him. And it's redone, it looks nice, and it just names that. That's all we're asking.
Thank you very much. You can sit down. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jessie.
This is Teacher Appreciation Week. I don't know what you can say when you think about teachers. I was so glad that they got a break during spring break. I was at Old Bridge this week and they, those kids, they came back with a lot of energy. And I have been in a school as a principal and I just want you to know that I appreciate everything that you do. I appreciate those times when the kids, they call them the helpless hand raiser, where they just raise their hands forever. And I know that you deal with all those kinds of things and that the SOLs are coming up and I know you're a little bit anxious about that, but we do appreciate everything you do for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to speak briefly to the turf field conversion at Freedom High School. I think it's been a long time coming and I appreciate all the work that has gone into getting that field turf. Many don't know Freedom actually has one field, so it's imperative that they're able to use that field for multiple sports and activities. And I know that they will greatly appreciate it, especially after their stellar football season, I think it was this year, I think they did pretty good. Can't lie, I'm not exactly the person who tracks football and sports, I'm not an athlete myself, but I'm trying. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. I also wanted to speak to National Autism Awareness Month. I think here in Prince William County, we do a stellar job with our autism students and I completely think hats off have to go to everyone involved. It's not only just the teachers, it's the counselors, it's the parents, it's everyone. It's a full-scale operation when it comes to autistic students and everyone works together, I think, as a team as best as we possibly can considering the medical community is constantly changing things on us. So I just wanted to send a special thanks to all of the people that, who deal with our autistic students and families because it is a major ordeal and it's a lot of effort and I think that we give it our all every time. And then in regards to Teacher Appreciation Week while I'm on a roll, I just want to say that I really do, I know that probably my son's teachers might disagree because I'm a fierce parent advocate for my son, but I really do appreciate all of the work that our teachers put in for our students. It's not just teachers, it's teaching assistants, it's everyone. It's a full-time job to not only teach the students but deal with the parents and deal with whoever is responsible, if it isn't the parents, and other members of staff in the building. It's a lot of coordination and I recognize one of the things that I've learned being a board member is that teachers go to school to learn how to teach and then they have to get a teaching job and learn all these other skills that they aren't taught in school to become a teacher. And I think that that's an amazing thing and undertaking that they do so willingly. And I just want to remind everyone, myself included, that we are always in the human business and it's good to come to teachers not only with whatever your criticisms are but also opportunities to change that from your perspective. So from one parent to another, when we have parents' complaints, it's good to offer suggestions and not just complaints because it's a team effort. So thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Vote of 8 yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to citizens' comment time. We had about five speakers in all sign up ahead of time, two at the door. We should be able to knock everybody out here in the given, given half an hour of time. I'll go over the rules here real quick and then we'll call everybody up. If you want to come up and take a seat in the front, or you can, but it's a smaller room today, so you're more than welcome to just kind of know where you are in line as well. Everyone will get three minutes to speak at the 2 minute and 30 second mark. With 30 seconds remaining, it'll turn yellow, that means it's time to wrap it up. And then when it turns red at zero seconds, it's time to, it's time to step aside. Please use proper decorum at all times, be nice. We usually don't have to implement that rule, but I say it every week just in case. So again, I'll call everyone here in order and then we'll, we'll get going. I will run the clock here for, I didn't say it, I will run the clock for my computer and it'll be on the screen of Bubbi. If you've never spoken here, you'll be able to see where your time is. So our first group of speakers is, our first speaker is a group speaker. It's Joe Mergo, Laura Gazda, and Trace Buckley. Our second speaker is BJ Brown, Lauren, then Lawrence Sneed, Riley Ocasey, Stan Ballant, and then signing up at the door was Bruce Smith and Kate Olson Flynn. Your time starts.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the School Board, and Dr. Walts. My name is Joe Mergo, proud Assistant Principal of Saunders Middle School. I'm here tonight with Ms. Laura Gaza, lead teacher at Saunders, and Trace Buckley, a 6th grade student at Saunders. Our addresses and phone numbers are on file. On March 1st, we shared with you our ACD Successful Schools Showcase that we were preparing to present at the Empower 17 concert, Conference in Anaheim, California. It was a very rewarding experience and we wanted to briefly share some aha moments that we took back. We found that although our intent was to present about being gracious hosts at Saunders Middle School, many of our conversations with fellow educators grew into discussing Prince William County's programs, resources, and supports.
For example, many fellow educators from around the world wanted to know how to start a mentoring program to enhance special education inclusion, streamline administrator and counseling collaboration, learn more about implementing standards-based grading, and build leadership capacity from within. We feel very grateful that Prince William County Schools already has these programs in place to support student learning and teacher and faculty growth. So we just wanted to thank you, the School Board, Dr. Walts, and the superintendent staff, specifically Mr. Bixby, for supporting and encouraging us through this journey. Ms. Ralston, yes, we did make it back to Prince William County to serve our students and this is our home. However, we did discover a potential place to retire. It was lovely. And...
And now Trace is going to share briefly his experience as a student.
At the presentation, I got a lot of questions about how Saunders is different from other schools and what do you like most about Saunders from various educators. I also got people's attention to come to our booth by passing out Saunders pencils and answering their questions when they had some. People liked how there was a student to talk to. One person even videotaped me speaking with people. A lot of times I would tell them about our school motto and Spartan Spile and how they affect me as a student. Sometimes if someone had a question I could not answer, I would introduce them to the principal or someone else that could help them overall. Overall, I think I represented our student body at Saunders very well and how they feel about our school. I think I helped the educators from around the county to improve their schools.
So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to share with you tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker is BJ Brown. BJ?
Good evening. I'm BJ Brown and I've spoken to you before that we now have 1 in 3 boys and many girls labeled with ADHD in areas of Virginia. 70% of the doctors and editors who wrote mental health manual DSM-5 got increased reimbursements due to the financial ties to pharmaceuticals companies and the weakening of the manual, now normal behavior can be considered mentally ill. Worldwide studies have shown that the youngest in the class are 75% more likely to receive an ADHD diagnosis. No Child Left Behind significantly increased the demands on children, schools, and families by a decrease of break times, recess, and PE from schedules and increase of homework and testing resulting in ADHD rise. Now we have epidemics in misdiagnosed ADHD bipolar and autism according to the architect of the DSM. Some classrooms have ADHD rates as high as 2/3. 80% of the psychiatric drugs prescribed are by unskilled primary care doctors influenced by, not well-informed by drug representatives. These meds cause disqualification for military service and increased diagnosis of bipolar and schizophrenia, psychosis, depression, anxiety, violence, suicide, addiction, and a gateway drug to heroin. Misdiagnosed mental health conditions have a significant impact on 73% of Virginia's budget. This is taking away resources from valid mental health needs. As you know, we've discussed earlier tonight about autism. There are solutions that have been recommended by the experts and theirs is that we now need to have awareness of these misdiagnosis. It's not to say that we don't have these illnesses, but awareness of the misdiagnosis and the epidemics and the side effects of these medications. We need revision of the DSM to extend current breaks, PE, and recess to meet expert guidelines and less testing through ESA, appropriate homework according to the guidelines, caution when seeking, seeking mental health diagnosis, better trained doctors given accurate information concerning pharmaceutical medications, and if you would like to see the full report that the Joint Commission on Healthcare will be examining, please go to bjbrownforva.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lawrence Sneed. Lawrence?
I'm Lawrence Sneed. I'm a senior at Forest Park High School and a student of Sharon Garrity. I am currently a student member of the ESA implementation team for PWA and I'd like to talk to you about the upcoming town hall. Originally when I joined the team, I thought it was just a great way to get some extra credit, but through it, I realized that the people who are on this team are truly experts. And I found the reason that I was called was to get more students involved since really even teachers out there don't know what's going on, don't know about the brand-new opportunity to come their way. Regarding the town hall, it's a great opportunity really for students to really tell what they want, even though I'm not going to be affected, people like my sister are going to be. And specifically regarding importance of what I find really important is accommodation for different kinds of learning. I really find that there are students that succeed that aren't allowed to excel beyond, there are people that struggle who are left behind, and then there are people who are just left to float. I find many redundancies in testing, not in tests that are important, but tests that really only serve as benchmarks, tests that test the same knowledge over and over again just because they're needed in the gradebook. And through ESA, hopefully we're able to create more efficient learning and it's my greatest concern. School seems to have turned into a place where desire seems to die in the classroom and I really hate to see people like my sister and my friends around me be victims of really kind of educational murder. It's, I hate to see students so bright being, having their genius squandered. And through my experience, meeting with these amazing people like Ms. Ocasey, I've really found that the best opportunity to do this is now. I'll be a moderator at the town hall, helping these students. Hopefully I'll get a chance to speak to the adults, but ESA is really, it's going to change a lot of legislation and it's really changed my life. Thank you.
And needing no further introduction, Riley Ocasey.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, board members, Dr. Walts. My name is Riley Ocasey and my address is on file. Tomorrow evening, over 200 people will come together to show support for the students of Prince William County. The ESA Town Hall is just the beginning of the crucial conversations needed to make incredible changes for our schools. The Every Student Succeeds Act, signed into law in 2015, mandates that stakeholders provide input into what will make our public schools better and ensure our students succeed regardless of their zip code. Tomorrow night, stakeholders will be seated at the table. There will be students, educators, parents, community activists, and elected officials working together for what's best for our students. I look forward to seeing many of you there as well as representatives from the school division. Tomorrow promises to be an adventure. All stakeholders coming together to put students first, elected officials, division staff, and educators working together, and students of all levels sitting with the adults at the table indicating what they want to see in their schools. And it's not too late to RSVP. Check it out on our Facebook page for PWA. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stan Ballant. Stan?
Hello, my name is Stan Ballant and my address is on file. Thank you for letting me talk to you tonight. I wanted to briefly address State Bill 14, or Senate Bill 1414 and Virginia House Bill 2355, which were signed into law in early March regarding access to PSAT, National Merit Scholarship, and pre-ACT tests for homeschool students. The law requires school boards to adopt written policies, which I trust you're aware of and are taking action on, and appreciate that. I wanted to draw to your attention the fact that as nationally recognized standardized tests, these are used for a variety of purposes to allow homeschool students access to a variety of programs with universities or other charitable organizations. So it's very important that any policy not have any age restrictions or grade level restrictions for who can have access to the test because there can be students who are aged younger or older than public, regular public school students who have a need to take the test to have access to these resources. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the folks who signed up at the door, our next speaker is Bruce Smith and then closing down the day will be Kate Olson Flynn. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, members of the board and staff. A pleasure to be back here and to wrestle you again. My name is Bruce Smith. I lived in 1905 Richmond Avenue in Woodbridge, since about November 1, 1987. I taught high school social studies in Georgia and in Virginia and in DC actually, before coming to PWCS and focusing on teaching reading in 1986. Since retiring almost five years ago, I've continued to serve as a retired member of the Board of PWA and the Virginia Education Association Advisory Council. My focus has been on advocating for more effective teaching in Prince William County as well as protecting our Virginia Retirement Fund from those who regularly seek to get a piece of it for their own pet projects. Tonight I'd like to focus your attention on two critical issues which I'm sure we'll look at again tomorrow night. Overcrowded classes is a critical issue which this board has begun to address, but on the whole, teachers, administrators, students, and parents as well as the Board of Education find themselves in a very deep hole. I'm sure you're aware of that. Congratulations for your effort. The problem is critical and will take years to bring down, to bring it down to a level that will significantly improve the quality of education as well as the overwhelming burden on teachers. The second issue which I'd like to focus on tonight is overtesting of our students. Although some improvements have been suggested, not nearly enough emphasis is being directed toward eliminating unneeded and basically anti-educational required testing. Weeks of instructional time and educational opportunity are lost each year, helping students memorize useless data that will be forgotten almost as soon as the annual testing process is over. For goodness sake, you must remember the college courses that you and I took many years ago. I can't use enough negative language to describe how much harm testing-related teaching does to our students every year. Quality education should involve interactive processes where students develop an understanding of the material and its importance as well as an appreciation for the possible interpretations of the data that may be encountered in the study of the same. I'd be happy to discuss the meaning of all that jargon at another time. So some of you will worry and ask then, what kind of measures should we use to see if our students are learning well and what they need to learn in our schools? There's a national system of testing randomly selected students every four years that lets us know how well our students are learning compared to students in other school systems. That as well as looking at the relative success of our former students and the success they're having in college and other technical schools and occupations will tell us all we need to know. As a teacher of social studies and later reading, I realize that most, the most effective instruction is that which gets students involved and maybe struggling with the importance of the people, events, formulas, and outcomes involved in their coursework. It is not important that students know who was the US President during the Civil War, but it is important that they develop some appreciation for the difficulties he and others faced during that time and others. As a reading specialist, my students did not have to take ASLW tests in my class.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I was critically aware of how well they did on the next ASLW.
Thank you.
On average, my students showed gains of 2 to 4 grade levels in reading after 1 quarter or more in my class. And for the lowest level readers, some starting in middle grades and reading on 2nd grade level, they sometimes showed much more improvement.
Thank you, sir.
Year after year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and I appreciate your attention to the task and it will reduce testing and improve education in our classroom.
Thank you. And our final speaker who gets 2 minutes and 15 seconds now. Our final speaker is Kate Olson Flynn.
Good evening, board, and good evening, Dr. Walts. My name is Kate Olson Flynn and you have my address on file. I'm here to speak on behalf of the many parents and students in the Lake Ridge community who are very unhappy about how the board's capital improvement plan is planning to use the county's money to relieve overcrowding in our schools and our community. Building new classrooms and adding a new elementary school is one step in the direction of relieving overcrowding in Lake Ridge, but this, these will not address the problems that already exist at Woodbridge Senior High School right now. The disregard and lack of attention to the high school has left it severely lacking. And I'll give you some examples. Not only are there not smart boards in every classroom at the high school, but there are still chalkboards in some of them, actual chalkboards from the 1970s. The 2 auxiliary gyms that can't be used because of safety issues. There are science teachers trolling around on carts because they don't have classrooms in which to teach biology. These are only 3 of the significant problems that are needed desperately to be addressed right now, not by 2026. So while you're redesigning the 13th high school, Woodbridge Senior High School remains as the 4th largest high school in the state that is completely underserving our community and our children. The capital improvement plan needs to be refocused on rebuilding Woodbridge Senior High School and building more schools in the Lake Ridge community, not just adding new classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moved my agenda, apparently. I've lost it. That's okay. We're moving right along here to 1501, which is Fred Lynn Middle School Corrective Action Plan Update. Mr. Bixby's already working his way to the microphone. Mr. Bixby, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jessie, members of the School Board, and Dr. Walts. Joining me this evening is Fred Lynn Middle School Principal George Neves. We appreciate this opportunity to provide the School Board with an update on the school's corrective action plan and report on the feedback that we received at our triannual corrective action plan review with the Virginia Department of Education on March 20th. The board knows from our previous update presentations that the school's corrective action plan is comprised of 3 essential actions.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Vice Chairman Jessie, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. This slide captures the first 2 essential actions that focus on implemented literacy and instructional practices that support student literacy and accelerating EL learners. At our March 20th meeting, the VDOE commended Fred Lynn for its staff participation in the professional development activities delineated in the corrective action plan for the staff's conscientious classroom implementation of those instructional strategies. The VDOE requested that at Fred Lynn's next triannual update meeting scheduled for July 31st, that Fred Lynn identify student work samples that show growth tied to those students. 31, that Fred Lynn identify student work samples that show growth tied to those changes in instructional practices that have taken place through the essential actions. The essential actions call for a reporting of observations and walkthroughs that are part of the plan's progress monitoring requirements. The Fred Lynn administrative team completed a combined 367 lesson observations and walkthroughs of language arts and science classes during the first semester. The school's instructional coaches completed an additional 69 lesson observations and walkthroughs during the same time period. At this time, I would like to take a quick moment to introduce the admin team and instructional coaches that are here present today, and they are totally vested in our work. So Ms. Jessica Parker, Principal on Special Assignment, Ms. Sherri Thomas, Assistant Principal, Ms. Penny Parker, Math Coach, Ms. Jane Carr, Language Arts and Literacy Coach, we have Ms. Christina Lowe from the ISOL Office, Dr. Eileen Lockhart from the ISOL Office. Thank you. We were surprised to learn in the March 21 email from VDOE's Office of School Improvement that due to an anticipated impact on funding sources, that the VDOE-approved person assigned to support Fred Lynn ended her assistance to Fred Lynn on March 31. Next slide. This slide outlines Fred Lynn's third essential action. We recently received an unofficial pre-finding on our December 2016 authorization visit, that finding simply requested that we complete a subject overview form that provides a summary of the work that we have already completed. This appears to be a simple formality. We anticipate receiving the formal authorization visit results sometime over the next six weeks. The Fred Lynn staff will continue to work hard to implement quality instruction to support student achievement for all our students. We look forward to returning on May 17 to provide you with an update on the school's progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Question or comments from the board? All right. Oh, sorry, Ms. Williams, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the staff for coming out this evening, and I wanted to, again, make sure that I communicate to you how much I appreciate all of the hard work and effort that you have put forth to helping your students and the community. I mentioned it to you earlier, but I wanted to make sure that it was public and on record because the community regularly gives me feedback as to how wonderful you are to the students and the parents, and how much your extra additional work is appreciated. I know you do things for dinners and Saturday schools and tutoring sessions and Principal Neves, I believe you're trilingual, as Dr. Walts corrected me last year. I mean, it's just amazing, the effort and the work that your staff and Fred Lynn does, and you cannot be committed enough from my perspective. So I just wanted to thank you, again, for your report and for coming this evening and for all of the hard work that you do. It is recognized in the community, so thank you. And thank you, Mr. Bixby, as always.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Satterwhite?
I also want to thank you, too, for the reports that you've been giving us, Mr. Nevis and Mr. Bixby, these periodic reports. Thank you for all the work that's gone into this. Thank you for the work that's behind this, because I know there's a lot of work going on in the school, and we thank you for all the efforts. There was one thing that caught my attention. On Slide 3, you mentioned the VDOE-approved personnel who is, due to an anticipated impact of funding services, was removed. How long was that person supposed to be with us?
We didn't have a termination date. We thought through the length of the corrective action plan or the memorandum of understanding.
Okay, and the memorandum of understanding goes through the school year, is that correct?
It goes through to the point that the school receives full accreditation.
Through accreditation, wow. Okay. And was there any warning with this? How much warning did you get?
Ten days.
And this was in the agreement that we signed with VDOE, is that correct?
The agreement is a little vaguer. The agreement says that the school will be open to any assistance identified and offered by the state.
Okay. I guess they decided we didn't need the assistance then, because our staff is so amazing. All right, thank you, Mr. Bixby, I appreciate it.
Like the way you work, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Ms. Jesse?
I find this to be a challenging way of supporting a school. I, you know, I just, you know, we do a lot of things now in the way, in the name of accountability, and I'm used to public types of sharing, and as a principal, we did a lot of that, and my staff always knew that their information was on parade. I just want to compliment UN, the staff, and Mr. Bixby, and for the professional way that you have handled this. And I guess my question is, in the upcoming school year, you're going to have new leadership. Does what's going to happen next year depend on the SOL performance at the end of this year? Or if, for example, we don't meet that accreditation status, will there be these types of public reports and sharing before the board with the, in the upcoming school year? The same type of sharing?
That would be my understanding, Ms. Jesse, that we would continue to give these reports until the memorandum of understanding is no longer needed.
And I want to thank Mrs. Satterwhite for calling it an agreement, but I can't think anybody who would agree to do this. But, again, I just want to compliment you, and I will come down to visit, and I want to see you before you go on that honeymoon you're going to go on. But thank you for all that you're doing, and thank you for all that you've done for Prince William County School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Anyone else? Thank you. Integration of the aquaponics at Potomac Middle School. Mr. Bixby, do not go anywhere. Stay right there. You're up again.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. In keeping with our ongoing commitment to share best practices that are taking place in our world-class school division, this evening, at the request of school board member Mr. Wilk, the principal and staff members from Potomac Middle School will be sharing their journey in the implementation of their school's aquaponics program. Potomac Middle School is a shining example of what is possible when a principal and staff take a collaborative approach to professional learning to improve the instruction, and to improve instructional design, to more fully engage our students in hands-on learning. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Kevin Smith, the proud principal of Potomac Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Bixby. Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. As the principal of Potomac Middle School, I would like to thank you all for this opportunity to present to you about our information about our inquiry-based STEM initiative through aquaponics at Potomac Middle School. Now, it is my distinguished pleasure to introduce our science teacher, Mr. Gregory Donovan, and our social studies teacher, Mr. Theodore Rosieack, who are the pioneers of Potomac's aquaponics program.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And good evening, Chairman Sawyers, Dr. Walts, and distinguished school board members. We appreciate the time that we have today to speak to you. Currently, the UN says we have to double food production by the year 2050 in order to effectively feed the world's expanding population. That information that Mr. Donovan, that is the information that Mr. Donovan and I decided to spearhead a program at Potomac that would address three major components. The first one is to provide students with a hands-on approach to solve real-world problems. The second is information from the United Nations regarding potential conflicts over access to fresh water, over the fresh water supply. Actually, there is a list of countries which include the United States, and Mexico, and Russia, North Korea, and other countries that have, India, Pakistan, that have nuclear capabilities which will impact the future generations. Also, number three is increasing drought conditions currently in Virginia is projected experience of moderate drought this summer, with the thought that it will get continuously worse over time.
As you can see from our graphic, aquaponics is a fully sustainable practice of food production that uses only organic materials. Fish waste, which is high in ammonia, is converted into nitrates, which fertilizes the plants. As the plants use these nitrates, the water is returned clean to the aquarium, which is a perfect way to include instruction regarding watersheds, water quality, ecosystems, and symbiotic relationships. This process, unlike hydroponics, does not require the use of mined and manufactured materials, pesticides or herbicides. Additionally, alongside our students, we've been able to scale our aquaponics system for multiple purposes. The main benefits for using an aquaponic system in an urban setting include increasing the standard production of plants by 10 times, while using 90% less water than traditional soil agriculture.
Thanks to the dedication of Mr. Smith to the aquaponics program at Potomac Middle School, we have continued to expand our facilities. This year, with the help of our students, we have built multiple varieties of pond systems and expanded the capacity in our original tub system. Under optimal conditions, we expect to be able to produce upwards of 250 heads of lettuce a week. Our goal is to be able to provide our own cafeteria with an unlimited supply of fresh produce that is grown organically right down the hall. Extra lettuce will then be sold to the staff and the community to further support the program.
Students in our urban agriculture club have been using the aquaponics discovery lab to enhance their understanding of multiple objectives. Using student data, we've tailored activities to help remediate specific deficiencies in student understanding. In addition to furthering their knowledge of scientific objectives, students have shown increased abilities in reading and writing and math through the use of our lab.
Our knowledge has been greatly enhanced thanks to the support of the division. Through multiple professional development opportunities, Mr. Donovan and myself have been able to learn how to best utilize aquaponics to fulfill the needs of our students. In August, we were fortunate enough to complete the aquaponics masterclass presented by Nelson and Pate in Montelo, Wisconsin. Nelson and Pate are at the forefront of aquaponics technology and instruction. The knowledge gained from this experience is priceless, and will continue to help benefit our program here in Prince William County for years to come. Additionally, we have traveled to learn about integrated instruction at Radnor Middle School in Radnor, PA, and aquaponics instruction at Johnson County High School in Mountain City, Tennessee. Radnor's integrated program, developed by Mark Springer, is internationally known, and the lessons learned will only further our ability to educate our students. We will also incorporate our observations of the aquaponic program at Johnson County. Each of these professional development opportunities will help to serve our students in our continuous pursuit to develop the most effective aquaponics education program possible.
Our greatest benefits are seen through hands-on, inquiry-based instruction with our students. Students that are given these opportunities learn how to problem-solve, work as a team, and effectively communicate their understanding. Students in our program utilize these concepts by continuous investigation and experimentation. Students have also applied engineering concepts in designing and building their own small-scale aquaponic systems. We find that it takes little time for our students to be able to understand and complete their assigned tasks once given minimal instruction.
Inquiry-based STEM instruction is an expanding field that has drawn attention from both the Virginia Department of Education and the United States Department of Education. The VDOE believes that we need to incorporate more opportunities in career technical education for all students in Virginia. Using aquaponics, we feel that we are giving our students a unique opportunity to face a rapidly changing 21st century. In addition to the VDOE directive, the United States Department of Education has indicated that they will be focused on theme-based and STEAM instructions. In our aquaponics lab, students at Potomac Middle School are experiencing these educational philosophies firsthand to the benefit of their understanding in the four core content areas.
Currently, we're using aquaponics to support objectives in multiple content areas. Reading and writing are supported with scientific literature review in student data notebooks. Scientific concepts are tailored to specific understanding of middle school science objectives. Measuring, graphing, and analyzing data help to support math objectives, and history is taught in crop selection and themes of contribution to society through agriculture. Additionally, community involvement and social skills are another aspect of our program. Students will develop business skills in the growing promotion and selling of produce to the school community. While these reasons show the importance of our program, by far the most impressive is in the sense of ownership our students show. Students that participate in our urban agriculture club are incredibly proud of their understanding and accomplishments, and beg to be included each year at Potomac.
Mr. Donovan and I would like to express our sincere thanks to all members of the division that have supported the aquaponics program at Potomac Middle School. First, we'd like to thank Mr. Wilk for his support and vision in inviting us to speak to you tonight. Dr. Walts, thank you for visiting our various locations, and for your guidance and support of our program. We'd also like to thank the Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Darlington, for listening to our ideas and for enthusiasm for helping educate our students. Mr. Bixby, we have truly appreciated your continued inspiration, and think you are the best aide-de-camp we could have been assigned. Additionally, we'd like to thank Mr. Smith for his support and our continued expansion, along with his vision in making this a truly unique program. We also feel that we should thank Ms. Alfie Turner for agreeing to start the aquaponics program at Potomac Middle School. And finally, we would like to thank the Spark Foundation for its initial funding to support our program. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming, and I really appreciate it. It's an honor to have you come and present the outstanding things that are happening at Potomac Middle School, as some of my colleagues and viewers at home are captively watching this. Although the ratings have been down, I think, Ms. Jesse, right? They've dropped? Yeah, things have dropped. Anyway, you have to do something, as we said. I'd like to go into Potomac. I have a great relationship with Principal Smith and your team. Mr. Smith allows me just to walk around, visit teachers, visit classrooms, and have great conversations. And in my visitations last year, I ran into Mr. Donovan and Mr. Rosieack. They said, hey, let me show you this cool thing we have going on here. And I stayed longer, and I went out there, saw it. I was captivated by the program, the plants, and all that. And then coming back this year, the expansion and the support that your building has fostered, it's just remarkable. And I love, I love having this stuff shared, because I like best practices, and I want other people and teachers and administrators who are watching this thinking of innovative ideas also to add to their buildings, that this is a great program to expand. And it further shows, I think, our division's commitment to expanding CTE and STEM learning opportunities for all students. So, again, thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Williams?
Thank you for coming tonight. I think this is the second time you've spoken to us about the aquaponics program. I remember you coming before and being very impressed by it. And I pass the school all the time, because my son is actually at the high school up the road, and now I'm encouraged to stop and see your program live in action. And I think it's really cool, if you ever decide to have a master student class, like our county does with master gardeners, you have my check. I would love to learn from students how to build my own. I'm a patio gardener, so moving something inside at a small scale, which I didn't even know was possible until this evening, I think is really, really cool. And just another, because I know as a board member, people like, write stuff down when we say it, it's just a suggestion, happened to be sitting in this seat, kind of a thing. But I know that we have programs at Potomac High School for business programs, and I know that you mentioned that the students were getting involved in that. So I was just thinking, maybe mentoring and teaming of two great, wonderful schools, and helping each other's students out, that would be a good way to follow up, continue with best practice. Not something you have to do at all. I just, it was one of those, like, spring ideas. I thought it would be really cool, because I know there's some cross-pollination already with some of the other programs like Alpha Academy and things like that between your students already. So I just thought, two wonderful institutions, another way to get involved. But seriously, if you do the class, I'm ready. I'm ready. So thank you for coming. I think that's an awesome program, and another great way to implement STEAM in our school system.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Brenn?
Gentlemen, I want to thank you for coming tonight. And first of all, it's always a pleasure to see Mr. Smith. I had the pleasure of being on the Safe Schools Advisory Council with Kevin, so it's always good to see him in person. Gentlemen, this is a new topic to me, and as a son of a retired farmer, I'm always interested in any form of agriculture. So you introduced some new terminology to me. I've only kind of briefly heard about urban architecture, but I thank you for throwing at that term as something I definitely want to learn more about and research. I just had a question about one of the bullets on the benefit slide. The terms of the
In terms of the community involvement, which is definitely something we've talked about with other presentations throughout this year, and I see that you mentioned farmers' markets and other engagements, what are some things that you guys envision in terms of moving forward with this program?
Thank you. One of the things that we've been discussing as a group is opening up a farmer's market to open up to our community. One of the things that we have realized along our Route 1 corridor, we look at the eating habits of several of the community members and students and families there, and we want to figure out a way to provide nutritional benefits to the students and families that we serve.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Who's going? Ms. Jessie?
I just, I want to thank you for sharing this. I've never heard this term, aquaponics? Aquaponics. I'm just curious. It's a huge word for a wonderful project. Anytime I think you can involve kids in hands-on opportunities to learn and have a product at the end that's useful. I'm just wondering if there's, because of our school board status, if perhaps we could maybe get some of the vegetables if we drop by? What do you think, guys?
I think that could be a great idea.
Can I just run by? I saw that garden, and it just looks wonderful. But from, and I also want to thank, I want to thank Mr. Wilk for bringing you before the board. I think, you know, we talk about the ratings. We're really not about ratings, but it's just wonderful to see learning being shared in this boardroom because that's really our number-one priority. We do a lot of things, but sharing learning and an opportunity for teachers to share. When we started doing best practices, I guess a couple of years, I don't know how long, we've done this a couple of years now, Dr. Walts? This is the third year that we've done this, and it's just getting better and better. So thank you for sharing. It's good to see you guys in the boardroom, and you all really look good, too. Thank you. You look so professional. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. And Ms. Williams has another comment.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give you my money, that's all. I just, you said the farmer's market, and I just wanted to let you know that I have to get up Saturday morning and go to the church around the corner to get my vegetables because there's none right there in that corridor. I live near Featherstone, so I'm frequent up and down that road. And there's another new thing going on now in the city and urban environments where they're boxing produce and taking orders ahead of time, and so you know what, how much produce you would need or not need on a subscription service. So that might be something else to consider. Any way I can give you my money for vegetables is really what I'm saying. But I just think it's, I think it's great. I mean, kids don't realize, a lot of children don't realize how their food is grown and what it looks like, and the difference between something grown freshly and, not in grocery stores, but what you buy in the grocery store, there's a definite difference in taste. I'm sure Sean could attest to that. So I just, I'm just over the moon about this, so thank you.
And I'll wrap it up here. I'm not going to lie, there's, when we, months out even, when I have school members who throw requests at me for best practice, everybody wants to show off their schools and their, you know, from their magisterial districts, and the first question is typically, how much time do you want for the presentation? Because I have to manage these things. And when Justin brought this up, I honestly, this is one of my things that I'm in love with. I campaigned on this a little bit, talking about educational things that also help solve all the other problems within our school system. I've said it before that, you know, our elementary schools alone range from 4% free and reduced lunch to 88% free and reduced lunch in our school system. And I know, I realize this is at a middle school, but it, when, and I know this firsthand, typically even when less fortunate families are able to eat, what they're able to afford is nutritionally worthless or very, very close to worthless because that tends to be the cheapest food. And so I realize that you're not solving world hunger at your school. I'm not trying to overstate this. I get it. But the value in what this provides, and honestly, the first thing I thought of when I read through the presentation, when it hit the board agenda a few days ago, was how do I get there to visit it and look at it? Because I'm just fascinated by it. I can't add anything intellectually to the conversation. I just want to see how it works and how you're doing, and honestly, in the long run, if we're able to multiply it and grow it. Because I think it's a wonderful program that solves a very real problem. Hungry kids can't learn. I can't do my job hungry, and they can't learn hungry. And so if we can start to provide this type of education through that, if it helps us solve that type of problem, I think it's very worthwhile, and I commend you for not only putting the time into it, but having the foresight to get this thing rolling. And Mr. Wilk speaks very, very highly of it, and now I see why. So thank you very much for your time and effort. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. Walts?
Thank you, Chairman Sawyers and members of the board. My report tonight comes in two parts. First, the normal talking points, school board update, and then the second part is reporting out on the school board adopted goals. During spring break, there was a minor electrical fire in a second-floor classroom at Freedom High School. It was quickly put out by the sprinkler system, but unfortunately, the water leaked to the floor below. There was some damage to smart boards, desks, computers, teaching materials, and ceiling tiles. We owe some special thanks to a number of individuals and teams over spring break. They included Facility Service Director John Windley, Ron Crowe, Director Risk Management, Freedom Assistant Principal Christie Feimster, Freedom Head Custodian Osborn Bermudas, and Andrew Uglow of Environmental Services, and members of their staffs. So they came in on their days off and on the weekend, going above and beyond to make sure that school was ready to open this week. So we really sincerely appreciate all of their very hard work. Congratulations to Minneville Elementary Principal Nathaniel Provencio on being named Washington Post Principal of the Year for the entire Washington metropolitan region. His success in leading his staff to help our students achieve great things was featured in the Washington Post magazine on Sunday. See our Facebook page with a link to that story. And again, congratulations to Principal Provencio. Swans Creek Elementary School has reason to celebrate awards from the National Association of Elementary School Principals. Principal Barry Rosenberg received the Association School Bell Award for his exceptional contribution as an administrator and for exemplifying excellence in leadership, character, and integrity. Ms. Amanda Broi won the National Outstanding Assistant Principal Award. Congratulations to both on being recognized in the Commonwealth of Virginia and Prince William County Public Schools. I send special thanks to Mr. Rosenberg, who is retiring at the end of this school year. He has been a successful principal in our school division for 31 years, and I believe that is a record. The Navy Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps at Osborne Park has a lot to celebrate as they return home from the Navy Nationals. This is the elite competition among the best Navy junior ROTC units in the world. Cadet Logan Combs Blake took first place in curl-ups. He did 336. That's three-three-six curl-ups total. Osborne Park's team brought home a drill trophy and ranked 14th out of 26 superb units. The team also was the first to win honors on its first trip to Navy Nationals. Congratulations to all junior ROTC instructors and cadets at Osborne Park High School. Best of luck to Woodbridge High School students who are heading to Richmond next week to compete in the Governor's Challenge in Economics and Personal Finance. The Woodbridge team will be one of 12 competing. I extend congratulations and thanks to more than 230 employees who are retiring this school year. I look forward to personally honoring those of you leaving at a reception and ceremony next Tuesday at Colgan High School. We would not be where we are as a school division without your dedication and expertise. I wish all of our retirees the best as they move toward a great new chapter in their lives. And speaking of new, I'm excited to report that students and community members have weighed in on school colors and a mascot for the new Covington Harper Elementary School. After surveys and some in-person meetings, they decided to go with cheetahs to embrace the Covington Harper initials. The winning color choices were blue and green, so here's a new logo that you will be seeing a lot in the months and years to come. So notice cheetah with the two caps there for Covington and Harper. So that's very exciting, and we'll see that on spirit wear and all kinds of good stuff. Yes. And so now, I will move into the second part of our discussion regarding the goals that the school board assigned to me and the staff regarding our specialty programs, dual enrollment, and career and technical education, and specifically regarding the communications of those programs. Hopefully. Here we go. So Standard 5, Communication and Community Relations, the superintendent fosters the success of all students through effective communication with stakeholders. To enhance communication relative to our specialty dual enrollment and CTE programs, including the development of a concrete transition plan identified to clarify the availability and details of such programs, to expand marketing efforts with a specific plan for a streamlined process by which board and staff members may provide user-friendly materials to parents and other public and private groups within the school community through technological, video, and multilingual communications. So that kind of gives you a big-picture view that recognizes what we're attempting to do in this arena. I don't need to remind you of the incredibly diverse and robust program offerings that are well-known to many. And again, we add another one tonight during our best practices, aquaponics. In spite of that, some occasionally refer to these programs as both our best offerings and our best-kept secrets. Student learning and school counselors have a long record of success in making sure that there is nothing secret about them. Expanded communication efforts are designed to build on the things they are doing, and that clearly works. So there's just a few quick pictures. Now, in your folders, you have the Profile of Excellence, and I just want to remind you, if you open that up, you'll see in there every special program that we offer in this school division. And I do want to say that, you know, as a school superintendent, you really can't do anything without the support of the board. No matter how much you might want to do something for students or employees or anybody else, you've got to have at least five members of the school board. So the school board is responsible for putting its actions and its votes and the money and the budget behind this list of amazing programs. And I will also tell you that we are a standout, not in just the state of Virginia, but in the entire country, to offer this array of programs and the transportation for students to get there. So again, a couple of these brochures may look familiar. Primary Ways the Programs Inform and Engage Their Perspective Students and Families are the Course Catalog and Application, and then the Program Nights that we host for students and parents. As you heard a couple of weeks ago, student learning have enhanced both of those by providing the course catalog now in multiple languages and having interpreters at these events. More work on the brochure is planned to integrate some of the new communication tools that I'm going to be sharing with you tonight. In our efforts, our teams are working to reinforce some key themes, and they are that the programs are interest-based. In other words, students should want to be interested or have an interest in exploring them. They all offer a broad curriculum. They are focused on special areas of interest, but they still cover a broad array of essential areas within that interest. We want to emphasize that the programs offer opportunities for everyone in our diverse student body. Wherever they come from, whatever their special nature, whatever their personal abilities, they're offered for everyone. These are deservedly impressive programs, but their high caliber should not deter students from considering them. We want to emphasize that students should pick programs that work for them and the path they want to take, high school to career and so forth. So one of the things that we're doing and that we put into play this year are pushing these opportunities, building awareness and information to the target audiences so they don't have to go and look for it. We've ramped up the messaging going out on pwcs.edu and on our school sites. We push the messages out via email and autodilers. That way, they can be translated to make sure we're reaching the non-English-speaking families. Email messages, based on the web example on the left, go out in all our target languages. So they're already going out now in English, Spanish, Urdu, Vietnamese, Arabic, and Korean, and we're just beginning Farsi. Over the past years, we've moved away, we've moved many announcements away from the formal content, which you see more on the left, and tried to use more compelling promotional approaches, like the sample on the right. Those words are part of an autodiler message. We put them out in multiple languages, and we're going to play a just very brief excerpt in Korean, and I think you'll... So even in Korean, HVAC CTE. So over the past months, the communications team has been working across all these areas, but we're focusing first on CTE. We're also trying to reach audiences where they are. We know from our survey results that a lot of people use a lot of different kinds of modalities in order to get and receive and absorb information. In the past year, we've dramatically expanded our use of social media, especially Facebook and Twitter, to get specialty dual enrollment and CTE programs in front of very engaged audiences. This is where you find more and more people going these days, social media. We will keep growing this approach now that we have finally filled a vacant staff position responsible for creating many of these communications and for responding to the conversations that result. In the center of the page that you're looking at, the slide that you're looking at right now, is an image off our website's homepage. We've used variations of that graphic to keep CTE highly visible on the homepage for the last several months. It's a component of the social media strategy because we send people to the web to follow up on the interest we spark using the social media tools and to readily access the materials that are available. Note that we use facts and stories to drive the interest of both students and parents. Over time, we will be integrating more and more of their success stories. So on social media and in other places, words are good, but the sights and sounds are really what speak to people. This year, our communications team has produced several different videos to build interest and awareness in different ways. Let's start with a very short, but deadline-focused example. You saw a longer version of this a few weeks ago here at the board meeting. This version highlights the way we make different use of larger productions to fill different needs with this short video. So the example is simple, but when it shows up on social media or a webpage, it can really grab your attention. And we're doing the same thing with testimonials, the things people are saying about these programs. That's why the communication team works with student learning and the schools to make sure the school board hears regularly from specialty, governor's school, and CTE students. The scene is familiar to all of you, but did you know that testimonials become video segments that then go out on our social media? So we're going to show you three short clips here.
And not only am I a student for dual enrollment for HVAC, I'm also a student for the dual enrollment classes at Freedom. I currently take dual enrollment speech, dual enrollment English 12, and dual enrollment HVAC. And this opportunity, I think, is something every student should embark on if they have the opportunity. If they can't transfer to Freedom, that's no problem. But the whole opportunity of HVAC is you're learning a trade skill, and I think learning a trade skill in high school, given the opportunity to learn it at such a young age, is essential for your life. Because not only can it be a great career Because not only can it be a great career path, it can also be a great plan B.
We have learned many skills necessary in order to pursue a career in cosmetology.
With a cosmetology license or any technical career certification for that matter, opportunities are opened up even for the students who can't afford a higher education like college or university. Outside of the Stonewall Cosmetology Program, vocational schooling for cosmetology alone can cost up to $30,000, and that excludes the money invested in textbooks, decent tools, and the high-quality mannequins needed to get a true reflection of our skills as they develop. Compare the cost of that program with the $60 we paid in order to enroll in the program and receive the same state-issued license. All the money saved could be used to better ourselves and our experience with the quality supplies, or even to further our own education. With this program, students like me, relying solely on one parent for support, have a new opportunity that opens up even more down the road. This program, this license, is a means to an end, or even an end in itself.
What I especially love about the culinary program is the various levels offered at Patriot, because for someone like myself who sees the hospitality industry and my future, I seek to learn as much as possible. And with the Intro to Culinary class, all the way to Culinary 2, it definitely aids in preparing us for the industry.
So again, this just gives you a brief example of things that you've seen. These students all came to various school board meetings and spoke for three minutes, and then we took small clips from that and again, put those out on our social media. It's a kind of third-party endorsement. It carries a lot of weight with students and their families when they hear from other students through testimonials. In the next phase of our efforts, we're making them readily accessible from the online and print materials that they visit. So, some details about dual enrollment to careers. Video is great for getting attention and creating excitement and for conveying details. This is an example of the videos we produce this year to introduce new programs.
Hello, my name's Doug Wright. I'm the supervisor of Career and Technical Education for Prince William County Public Schools. Very excited to be able to talk to you today about a program we have that is a partnership between Northern Virginia Community College and Prince William County Public Schools. This program, Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning, is a new partnership that allows our students from Prince William County Public Schools to access the Nova class and program during the day. It's dual-enrolled. Students will earn high school credit and earn college credit at the same time. This is a very unique opportunity.
My name's Antonio Soto, and I attend Woodbridge Senior High School. I'd like to thank the county for offering me this great opportunity. And I feel this is a great trade because it's financially stable, it's high in demand, and it'll give me a good future.
Good morning. Welcome to Northern Virginia Community College. We have a great air conditioning and heating program, started back in 1977. This program would enable students to get a job in the field of air conditioning and heating, and also in facilities. We have three programs that we offer, the certificate in facilities, an associate's degree in heating and air conditioning, and also another certificate in air conditioning.
Hey, I'm Paulo, and I'm from Garfield High School. And Prince William County really gave us a great opportunity with this HVAC program.
Please come out, students and parents, to see the facility, meet the faculty, and learn more about this exciting program. We hope to see you there.
So like all video products, footage and scenes can be repurposed in a variety of ways, as you've just seen. The video is the current evidence of what the board requested through its goal-setting process. But we are constantly expanding on your expectations. Our goal over the coming months is to produce videos for as many different CTE and specialty programs as time and resources permit. They can be used at open houses, online, and used in mobile devices, to which these programs have an even greater impact. Or perhaps to answer questions, such as, can someone with special needs excel in these programs? Of course, the answer is yes. But our plan going forward is to use video and take advantage of the old adage that seeing is believing. So we also are trying to share, as you can see in some of what you've seen already, more about the excitement. So today, if you're excited about something, you're going to use social media, chances are, to let others know about it. Our communications team can't and doesn't want to control that enthusiasm, but rather we want to channel it and to spread it. The sample on the left is just a picture of a tweet that someone excited about what's going on in the culinary program sent out, and it reached a handful of dedicated followers. This year, our communications team has been retweeting exactly this kind of thing to more than 77,000 School Division followers to help keep our specialty and CTE programs in the public eye. The more we spread them, the more the audience is aware and the more the awareness expands. The team is also eager to help spread the word by helping enthusiastic board members focus their own communications on the programs you've directed us to promote.
What we wanted to do is we wanted to create a product so that firefighters could actively see what's going on in a smoke-filled environment without having to decrease their mobility. We created an infrared heads-up display for specific application in firefighting so they could actively see what's going on in infrared in a smoke-filled environment. We have a modified webcam here meant to see in the infrared spectrum, which then goes to our Raspberry Pi processing unit on the mask, and then it goes to our LCD screen after processing images so you can see fire temperatures and human temperatures, and it reflects on the inside of our mask so they can actively see what's going on as they're in the fire.
Innovative research and design projects that could save a life. These are the skills and experiences students are getting here at the Governor's School at Innovation Park. Hi, I'm Lori Williams, the school board representative for the Woodbridge District, and a big supporter of specialty offerings here in Prince William County Schools, including the Governor's School. It's one of 19 Governor's Schools in Virginia where students attend during the school year. It's the only one located and partnered with a four-year university. And this partnership with George Mason means big opportunities for our students in science, technology, engineering, and math.
Two minutes, ninety seconds, counting.
A STEM education has never been so valuable. There are millions of unfilled jobs in science, technology, and engineering. Our Governor's School students will be prepared for earning degrees and getting careers in high-demand, high-paying fields.
We could change it, so like we could put this somewhere else.
I'm so excited by the research and design projects these young scientists are working on. Not only are they understanding the nature of global problems, but they are implementing solutions to the problems themselves.
One of the things that I really love about Governor's School is because you have these abilities that you can really understand engineering and investigate the processes that engineers do on a daily basis in their jobs.
The Governor's School at Innovation Park serves juniors and seniors. They spend the first part of the school day on campus enrolled in advanced STEM classes, but they still take other classes and participate in extracurricular activities like clubs and sports back at their base high schools. It's the best of both worlds.
Governor's School pays for four dual enrollment courses. They cover the entire cost of it. And what's cool is that most colleges will take these credits, so you'll already be entering ahead of your peers and your fellow students. You're at a college campus, so there's something just motivational and inspiring just in that alone. Also, the people here, they all want you to succeed, you want them to succeed. It's very collaborative. It's an excellent atmosphere.
I applied to the Governor's School at Innovation Park because I wanted more academic opportunities in STEM. And I also wanted to get a better understanding for a possible career path. And at the same time, I love that I'm still a part of my base school. I can still take part in classes there, and I take AP US History and AP Language and Composition. And at the same time, I can take part in the activities there like Student Council, Key Club, and National Honor Society.
Our classes are very strong, conceptually speaking, academically speaking, they're very strong.
Who has row three? Yaman?
I mean, we have an amazing group of kids that are doing really, really great things. So I think we have a wonderful thing going on here.
The students that come to the Governor's School at Innovation Park are proactive learners. These are students that can thrive on a college campus with a structured environment, looking at both having the flexibility to research things that interest them, and also having the structure and flexibility within the classroom to excel.
You may pick up more points there.
Our students investigate and challenge the problems that they see in a global society. Every single day, I see the outstanding work that they're capable of.
What number did you get? You were gone.
Prince William County Schools is very fortunate to have the Governor's School Innovation Park. Students leave with a minimum of 12 college credits when they graduate and are prepared for success in college and beyond. No doubt, these kids are our next cybersecurity experts, biomedical engineers, software developers. I am proud of what goes on here at the Governor's School and hope our students take advantage of this opportunity. And remember, there are more specialty programs across the division, everything from foreign language to culture and fine and performing arts, welding to culinary arts. Visit pwcs.edu and search specialty programs. There's something for every student.
Communication Services is also producing and repurposing videos to use in building interest and urgency around program enrollment opportunities. Here's another example.
Oh, okay, I see how it dilates now.
They blink their eyes, they move when they breathe, and they talk just like a real patient.
Does that feel good?
Yeah.
Okay. What's another angle?
This is the simulation lab in the school division's practical nursing classroom at Osburn Park High School. These mannequins are helping second-year nursing students learn skills in a non-threatening environment. Their teacher plays the role of the patient by talking to the students, controlling vital signs and reactions of the mannequin through a computer.
With them being allowed to practice it in the simulation lab and then applying it in the clinical setting with an actual patient, it really brings everything together.
Through simulation, like you are the LPN, as opposed to working with an LPN and letting someone else correct you. So you have to stand up for yourself and use your own skills and your own knowledge to make the right decisions. And you can see what happens when you don't do that.
If you were to go to a hospital, you'd be like, oh my goodness, how am I going to do this on a patient? Like, are they going to sue me if I do it wrong? So in the simulation, you got to do mistakes and without having to worry about it. And also, we got to play different roles. There were people that were an RN, an LPN, the doctor, a surgeon, and see how it all functioned in the hospital.
The Practical Nursing Program prepares students to take the National Counsel License Your exam for practical nurses, known as the NCLEX. And thanks to these mannequins, which were purchased with grant money from the Atomic Health Foundation, the program is seeing an even higher pass rate. In fact, since 2002, 90 to 100% of students have passed and have become licensed practical nurses. The program takes 18 months to complete. Students may complete the first nine months, known as the pre-clinical year, as a high school senior. They are in class for two and a half hours a day, Monday through Friday, and they earn three high school credits that may also satisfy a sequential elective. It is tuition-free, but they must purchase their books so that they may keep them. The second nine months of the program, known as the clinical year, is more rigorous and is completed after their high school graduation. The Practical Nursing Program has partnerships with local healthcare facilities where second-year students complete their clinicals. This gives students a chance to experience the hospital and healthcare environment through observations and working with real patients. The program provides a quality foundation for students who desire to become a registered nurse, which is the next level of nursing.
I'm farther along currently than people who I graduated with where they would be
So once again, that video demonstrated the value of real stories and real people to get the program message across. Finding and telling those stories is at the heart of the communications plan and tactics for all of the programs we've been discussing. They are central to the campaign unveiled in my first presentation on this subject. Success by CTE is the theme for posters and ads that have been used throughout the recent recruitment period. And you can see in the back of the room, you can see some of those posters that we've been using. But the campaign is meant to be the basis for much more. We will be gathering stories over the next few months and using them in social media, on the web, and in reaching out to the press to tell stories of how CTE makes a difference in people's lives. Those stories will be linked to program pages on the web. We also intend to use them for a new handout meant for targeted audiences. Picture a collection of images from the posters with less enrollment text, but possibly some more information about each of the people. It will be a series of stories on how each one is succeeding through CTE. It will combine compelling stories with a summary page of application information. The result will be something user-friendly, available in print and online to raise awareness and participation. So I hope this demonstrates that our communications efforts are delivering on the board's expectations, the things you've seen and heard are concrete evidence of the communication plan that is in place, being followed, and constantly evolving. You've seen illustrations of the expanded marketing efforts in action, and you've seen materials that are increasingly accessible online, and more to come. And you can see where the efforts are heading from here. And there again, I won't read that slide, but those are the words directly from my goals. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Walts. Okay, we're moving on to the last item before Board Matters here, which is the approval of the selection and nomination of the student representative of the board. To the board, I'm going to make a motion, and again, this is a collaborative effort of kind of what was the feedback and different things, and we can always go from there. So my recommendation to the board is going to be that, allow me to, I'll read this motion, I'll explain it, and then we can ultimately tweak it as the board sees fit, but this will be kind of our jumping-off point. So let me go ahead and do that. I'm going to copy and paste here. Hopefully, this works. My motion will be, and it'll be on your screens when I get a second, you guys will be able to read it yourselves, but that the Prince William County School Board adopt the recommendations of the superintendent's Student Representative Committee with the following changes, adjustments, and clarifications. Students attending alternative schools are also eligible, assuming they meet all the other requirements. Student representative cannot attend VSB or NSBA events. Regional VSB meetings are acceptable. No overnight trips for the student representative. A minimum of a 2.5 GPA at all times and no failing grades in any quarter. Only one student per school can be represented between the student representative and alternates. The student representative and alternates will be announced at the beginning of 2017-18 academic year and at the earliest, by the, at the earliest, excuse me, or by the end of the, end of September 2017 at the latest. A student may have one discipline referral and still be considered for student representative. And then the last one is make a concerted effort through multiple platforms, email, website, social media, school announcements, et cetera, to ensure that all eligible students are made aware of their ability to apply to be the student representative. And I'd be glad to go into detail on those and explain why they're there, but first, we need a second for the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Jesse, thank you. All right. I'll just do this as quickly as possible. I think it's good, the board, to hear some of the justification here. Most of this is from, is from one or more either comments from the day's last board meeting, or it was typed up through some of the things that was sent to me. So, without going off memory on who provided me with what here, students attending alternative schools and eligible, are eligible, assuming they meet the other requirements. That quite simply means like the, the new school, sorry, I'm slipping my, New Directions, thank you. Assuming, and again, what I mean by assuming they meet the other requirements, like GPA and the discipline referral, the other requirements that are necessary. So they're just as eligible as anyone else who, who attends a traditional high school. The student representative cannot attend VSB or NSBA events, and the regional VSB, VSB events are acceptable, and we can handle those on a case-by-case basis with the student representative. But that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the next one, which was no overnight trips for the student representative. I think that was something that came across, many, many board members brought that up. The next part is the minimum GPA of 2.5 at all times and no failing grades in any quarter. I believe the 2.5 was, I believe it was recommended from, from the committee. I think Ms. Satterwhite and maybe one other mentioned something about the failing grades. I thought it was an interesting touch, so I kind of added to it. And then only one student per school can be represented between the student representative and the alternates. That would, if there's, if there's two alternates and one student representative, that would at least mean three of our, three of our schools are represented that way, as opposed to multiple students coming from one school. And that, and then this one, just a little bit of an explanation, it kind of, kind of ties in a little bit with what Mr. Deutsch and I were both saying, and so I thought I would explain it. The student representative and alternates will be announced at the beginning of the 2017-18 academic year at the earliest, or by the end of September 2017 at the latest. The reason for that is, I think we all kind of seem to agree that June 21st might not be the best one to do, and it might rush the system a little bit. Dr. Walts had mentioned that it's kind of a deadline because the, obviously, the school system thins out for the summer, and we might not have the people around and the staffing, the ability to kind of do this during the summer. So my thought process behind this timeline was, so if it needed be, it gives, it gives superintendent and his staff time at the beginning of next academic year if they need it. It gives them a little bit of a window for when everybody comes back to finish the process if necessary. So it kind of gives you a window on, on both ends that way, and just gives you a slightly bigger window to get it done without it being rushed. So again, that was the logic behind that, trying to combine different ideas about not being in too big of a hurry. And I'm sorry, just to make sure I get my place here. There was a couple of board members who brought up a student about discipline referrals, that it doesn't necessarily disqualify them if they have one discipline referral. Obviously, they will be taken on a case-by-case basis, but that was one, one recommendation of several different school board members. And then, last but not least, I think, was from Ms. Jesse. And then last but not least, I think, was from Ms. Jesse, that she talked about making sure it got out to many people and make sure it just wasn't done one way. So I added in there about to make a concerted effort through multiple platforms, email, website, social media. So we make sure we get the word out to everybody, just, just make, make an effort to get the word out to the most people that we possibly can to get the most applications for the seat. Sorry, Mr. Deutsch.
No, sorry, we're just talking.
So the idea behind this was ultimately just to try to combine as many ideas as possible. A few ideas that I didn't add in here off the bat, to be fair, I know several, several board members mentioned to have basically either one from, a representative from every high school, things like that. I didn't add that to this original motion. I personally think it's a little, it's a little much for the first time that we do this to have somebody from every school. They'd all have to have FOIA training, they'd all, it'd be, it'd be a much, much more cumbersome process for the superintendent and his staff to do the first time through. Ultimately, I guess if, if future boards want to expand upon it, I think they certainly can, or if we want to expand upon it, we certainly can. But I think, I think generally speaking, the presentation that was given to us last board meeting is a very good jumping off point to do this. And I think very rightfully so, that there's a few tweaks and a few adjustments that the board had some interest in doing. But I think it's important that no matter what we do, after having conversations with staff about this, that we do, if we, if we do have an interest in doing this in any reasonable amount of time for next year, we do want to pass something tonight to give them the time to start to implement this. So that is where, it's not on your screen, is it? I apologize. There. I'm sorry. Someone should have yelled at me. I apologize for not getting it up. So that's, that's the, that's the motion in general. So anyway, we can open up, and I know, I know there's not, every idea made it into the motion, so I certainly want to give the chance to do that. So Ms. Jesse, go ahead.
The one recommendation was that all the high schools were represented, and I didn't see New Directions as a high school. Does that one item include New Directions?
It does. The very, it's the very first one. The students, students attending alternative schools are also eligible.
Well, I know, but there was a list of people that were, I'm not sure how that was represented. At the end, there was a list of high schools, and New Directions are representative from each, from those high schools? I'm not sure.
I'm just.
Can you clarify for me?
I'm, I'm sorry. Let me just clarify the intent of the motion. The intent of the motion is to say yes, that absolutely any eligible student that, that may attend Battlefield, if they meet the requirements at Battlefield High School, if they also attend New Directions, they would also meet the requirements if they were a junior or a senior, and they had the proper GPA and all that stuff, they would be eligible as well. That's the idea of that motion. Dr. Walts?
There's a further one, and that's the people who are the adults on the selection committees. There's someone from each high school, and Ms. Jesse is proposing to include a staff member in that adult list from New Directions.
That's true.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. McGowan.
If I could just say that that person has already been selected. We're one step ahead of you on that. We have already selected a person to serve on the student selection committee from, from the alternative school.
From New Direction.
New Direction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Great. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the staff for this undertaking. I was obviously absent for the last meeting, but this was definitely something that I brought forth and I'm very passionate about. I'm excited about starting it, this process, and my only concern that I'm, well, I have lots of concerns, but my only concern for this evening is I'm really concerned with the statement in the, the motion that it stands, and I'm wondering if there would be any objection. I'd like to make a friendly amendment, but if it's not worth making, then it's not worth pursuing. But the, the statement, it says a minimum GPA of 2.5 at all times and no failing grades in any quarter. My concern with that is because they're high school students, and they range everyone from special education to students who are in, you know, extremely challenging, rigorous courses, that no failing grades at any time does not allow for a student to make mistakes and fail and still pursue this. And to have a 2.5 GPA, I mean, I would imagine somewhere in there, they would have had a bad grade. So I kind of feel like that's a little conflicting, and I'm wondering what the rest of my fellow board members think about that. My idea for this in the beginning and still stands really is to not, and I know this was discussed, to, to make sure that we don't pick the student who's using this as a stepping stone to further whatever career, but to make sure that we are hearing from every student and, and, and not just this, the typical stereotypical student that you would think of. And I think that by including a statement in there that says no failing grades at any, in any quarter, that we would be eliminating some students who maybe have failed, maybe a special education student, or a student who's taking an AP class that really gave it their all but still failed, and now they can't participate in something like this. I'm just really an advocate for making sure that we don't have students feeling excluded by something like this, because I guess traditionally, the notion of a student representative to a board from a student perspective would be someone who already participates on a student council, or National Junior Honor Society, or something like that. And I just don't want to intimidate a student that maybe, I mean, for myself example, as an example, I graduated high school with a 2.0, and I'm sitting here right now, and I was a very valuable contributor to my community. I sat on the community board for Prince William County as a student, you know, went through E I P, all of these other things that I was participating in, and if I had, had that restriction, I wouldn't be able to participate, so.
Ms. Williams, would you like to make an amendment to the motion?
I just wanted to hear if anybody else was, I mean, like, simple nod. I don't want to waste time.
I, I'll just say, since I kind of typed it up and read, and read all the notes and kind of all that.
I wasn't sure what I was going to say.
I mean, the idea, the idea of it, I'll just explain it, we can go from there. If you want to make an amendment to the motion, you can. You can still have the floor when I'm done explaining. The idea is that, you know, is that, you know, if they apply for the position with, obviously, they could have a 2.5 GPA, they, you know, and go from there. And if any kind, during, during their time, that's what the alternates are for. If for some reason that they're failing a class, the idea being it's time to focus on that class and not necessarily, not necessarily worry about being a student rep on the board. I mean, that's the general gist of it and why it's there. It doesn't mean if they, if they failed, if someone failed something this quarter, and then by the next time the applications came around, assuming that was not an F anymore, and, and they had a higher than a 2.5, they'd be eligible to apply the next year as well. It's not, it doesn't rule them out forever. It's just, it'd be, it'd be more something, the failing grade during the quarter would apply more during their term as, as a, as the school board rep or an alternate.
Thank you, Mr., that really basically was what I was looking for, a little bit more background. I think that's great. If we could maybe mention in the application process a little bit more about why that's in there so that the students know, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Deutsch.
Just on, on this note here, the motion doesn't say what, Lori has the correct reading of what the whole failing grades reads on this motion. So if, if the intent is to change it to what you just explained it as, then we need to actually change the motion, because that's not.
You'd have to make an amended motion, Mr. Deutsch.
I'm just pointing out the way it reads.
It'll stand until someone makes an amended motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms., Ms. Williams.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the current motion to add language in there that speaks to the specifics of the no failing grades in any quarter so that students understand, or applicants understand.
I'll need to specifically type up your motion. What is your motion, Ms. Williams?
My motion is to add language detailing the specifics of the minimum GPA of 2.5 and no failing grades in any quarter into the application.
I'm not taking that back. That's not what you. Take out the.
Hold on, we can't have the, we.
But he's got to type.
Yeah, sorry. Add. So Ms. Williams, I have it that, that, again, as it explained, that will detail the specifics of the minimum GPA requirements and no failing grades in a quarter in the application process. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Williams makes the motion. I'll second that motion. Discussion? I know you mostly said it.
No, I just wanted to piggyback on Diane's question. The reason, I'm in agreement, I think that if we do have a student representative on the board and their grades do suffer, that they should be able to have an alternate step in and be able to allow them to still hold the position but focus on their grades during that quarter. And I think that that's a good safeguard. If that's, the intent is for it to be a safeguard, then I'm in agreeance with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Deutsch.
All right. It still doesn't say anything about failing grades disqualifies you from continuing as one. It's still, the implication is still that you have to have no failing grades or beyond. So this wording doesn't say what we think it says.
Again, ultimately, the superintendent and his staff will take what the board votes on, and obviously, we can make it, make it clear, it's, we're not ultimately writing the manual for it here. We're providing direction to, for the superintendent and his staff to do that. I think, I think everybody seems to be on the same page as what we're trying to accomplish here.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
When, I know, I was just going over this with the scholarship application with my son. Grade point average in high school is usually computed using semester grades. Mr. Mulgrew, am I correct in, in thinking that? So, so when we're looking at GPA, we'd be, and the students filling it out in application, that's going to be considering semester grades. So do we want to, the no failing grades in any quarter, are we going to talk about quarterly grades, like on the report card? Are we going to talk about semester grades? Because if we aren't specific with staff, if we aren't specific up here, they aren't going to be mind readers. So if there's something specific we want to have on there, how do we want to address this? Do we want to say no, no failing grades on the quarterly grades in the report card? No, no failing grade in a quarter on a report card?
That's how it reads now, I believe. Is that what you're asking?
Because it's, it's not, I think, I think, am I right in understanding, Ms. Williams? It's just not specific enough as written, no failing grades, and maybe add the language on a quarterly report card?
Yes and no, yes, and I agree with what you're saying, but I did want to, because I, I do believe that staff did a tremendously fabulous job in coming up with what we have before us, and I do believe and value their expertise. So I wanted to allow them to write the language, because I think that they're best suited and geared for dealing with this, the audience that this application is intended for. And if we have any adjustments to go from there, I think that we, you know, we've dropped this, I've dropped this in their lap, so I'd like to give them the opportunity to continue with it. And then if tweaks need to be made, then we can always come back and make those tweaks at that time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms., Ms. Jesse, then Ms. Ralston.
Okay. I, I think what she's saying is, and I've had some students at the high school level who've done this, very bright students, who enter a course that are in too many courses and end up with a failing grade at the quarter, and they make adjustments. I think it's going to be a student-by-student basis. Sometimes the straight A kids will end up taking courses, too many courses, it's not because they're on the board, but something happens in that course, or maybe they're ill or something, or something could happen. I think that, I think we, in, in some ways, I think we should tell them what to do, but I think that you've got a smart group of people who have put this package together and that I'm not, we are not to, I don't think we should write this, what they should have in the application process. I think we give them, we give them guidance. I don't think that we give them all the wording. If, does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My thought was that we were going to have a, maybe a work session on this so that we could have clarified everything, but since we didn't, my suggestion is real simple. Semester grade, just on the semester grades. So if there, if there is a drop from the 2.5 to 2.2, sometimes maybe you had a headache when you were taking your exam then. And we don't, one of the things that we don't do here in Prince William County Schools is put you down. We always lift you up. So that's the purpose, in my opinion, for the two, not to do it on quarters, but on the semester grade. Where I come from, we've always had students on the board. And we've had every kind of student you can think of that spoke every language, and so they were very helpful in that regard, because we couldn't always speak all the languages. The other piece to that is that you'd be surprised how smart these kids can be when we're sitting, thinking that we have the answer. They just come up with it. And I know that you're either teachers, or nurses, or whatever your field is here in the school district, you know that, because you've watched them, you've seen them, you know? Sometimes they sit back, and you would think they don't know a thing, but they know a whole lot more than I know, sometimes, on some things. So, Mr. Chairman, if the, if the semester is okay, I'd like to make that motion to move forward.
Okay, we're going to amend the amended motion.
Yes.
No, we, she's, we're making an amendment to the amendment. And then after that, we can, we won't add any, we can only have two on the floor at a time. Is, Ms. Ralston, the, the current amended motion is to detail the specifics of the minimum GPA requirements and no failing grades in a quarter in the application process. Do you just want to change the word quarter to semester?
Just the semester, yes.
The amended motion, Ms. Ralston, is to change, change quarter to semester in Ms. Williams' amended motion. Does that, does that fit your needs?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll second that as well. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Now we're back on to Ms. Williams' amended motion with the word quarter changed to semester. Detail the specific, the amended motion now on the floor is detail the specific minimum GPA requirements and no failing grades in a semester in the application process. Any further discussion on this motion? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed?
The vote is seven yes, one no. Deutsch, motion passed.
And we're back to the main motion with, with the, with the, obviously, the amended motions applying here. Thought I hit the wrong button for a second. I got it right. Sorry. That would have been bad. All right, so we're back to the main motion with the one amended motion already voted in that the details, the detail the specific minimum GPA requirements and no failing grades in a semester in the application process. So we, we have that amended motion up and passed, and now we're back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I would like to make a friendly amendment for the line with a student may have one discipline referral and still be considered. I'd like to change, I'd like to insert a word, may, a student may have one significant, I'm sorry, a student may have no more than one, add a little bit more language, a student may have no more than one significant discipline referral. That way, we're, we're limiting, instead of one disciplinary referral, which could be very broad, we're limiting that to no more than one significant discipline referral.
Hold on one second. A student, a student may have, I was copying and pasting, sorry. A student may have.
No more than one.
No more than one.
Significant.
Significant.
Discipline referral.
Discipline, discipline referral and still be considered for student representative? Is that, is that okay?
And the rest of the language.
It's the same, yeah, I just added those. So the motion reads, the amended motion, a student may have no more than one significant, Mr. Welk? A student may have no more than one specific, a student may have no more than one significant discipline referral and still be considered for student representative. Is that, is that to your liking, Ms. Satterwhite?
Yes.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Williams, seconds. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
This is for, Ms. Satterwhite, please. Significant. Significant, can you give me your definition of what a significant would be?
Well, again, I think that's one of those things where we're going to have to yield to staff, as you were just talking about. But I would consider a significant to be something where you're facing an out-of-school suspension, or long-term suspension. That's when you're getting, I think, a significant discipline. A smaller, in my opinion, this is in my opinion, if we're dealing with a smaller disciplinary issue, a lunch suspension, a one-day suspension. And I think this is going to be, if you wanted to add other language with, and adding with a principal or an administrator's approval, we could do that, too. That's making another bureaucratic step. I think this simplifies it enough. This allows students who've made one stupid mistake to still be able to apply.
I accept that. I accept your definition as you're using it. Let's just hope that it goes through and stays that way. Thank you.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you. So I've got a couple of questions for Dr. Walts. And I appreciate Ms. Satterwhite's intent, but do we have categorizations of significant or less significant discipline infractions?
The state lays out a number of categories of different kinds of disciplinary infractions. I don't think that's the language that they use, but, again, using the idea of discretion, I would feel an obligation to come to the board if I or someone from OSMAP had a concern of a serious infraction, bringing that before the school board in closed session. So, again, there's some judgment involved with that.
Okay, is there, is there a tier of infractions that's higher than a significant disciplinary infraction? So we're not allowing people with, say, the worst type of infractions to be considered?
Well, like, for example, there's certain infractions that you're automatically expelled for a year. Certain weapons violations and things like that. So those wouldn't, you wouldn't even be able to consider students like that. And then it's everything from, a teacher tells you to do something, and you don't do what the teacher says, spit out your gum, and the student doesn't spit out their gum, and they get referred to the office. That, to me, does not rise to the level of, you know, you can't sit on the school board. Now, if they continue to be insubordinate, that's a different matter.
So we don't really have any clear delineation of what counts as significant and doesn't?
Well, again, those aren't the categories that are used. You can look at the code of behavior, like, we could pull that up. But, again, I would not have any issue with bringing to the board if we put a student on the board, and they got into some kind of disciplinary infraction that rose to the level of OSMAP, coming before the board.
Ms. Williams.
I like Allison's suggestion, and what we were discussing down here, if it'll give you a little bit better sense of reference. Mr. Deutsch, is, students, especially at high school, you can get a disciplinary referral for being tardy, which, sorryly, but my son just had, you know, and he's never had any disciplinary referrals outside, I mean, he has no interest in being on the board, but still, the point is that, let me clarify that before he's like, "My mom said." He, you know, so those things happen. If you're in a large student, if you're in a large high school, which all of our high schools are, and you don't make it to class, this class or that class, because you stopped by your locker, it shouldn't disqualify you from getting on the board. And that's something that really does happen to a lot of our students. And in addition to that, you know, we just want to make sure that we're not holding students to a higher standard than we would hold adults in public life. So I think that we have a tendency to do that sometimes in our school division, just to make sure that we're imparting good citizenship skills on our students. But I think this is a good example and a good time and place to not put on restrictions that would be higher and above and beyond than, say, you would for, I mean, none of us up here on the board, if we had a speeding ticket, or if we had a jaywalking ticket or whatever, does not exclude us from running for public office. So it's kind of one of those things, to me, where I feel like we shouldn't hold our students to that much more of a higher standard than us as adults who chose this position. So that's why I'm in agreeance with Allison's.
I'm going to say something real quick. One, I think the intent, and Ms. Satterwhite certainly, I don't think she'll hesitate to correct me if I'm wrong, it just, it's basically just saying, in long and short, is that we're forgiving, we realize that no one's perfect, and this isn't, this isn't only restricted to perfect children. And, second of all, Dr. Walts, I believe that you're a learned man, and have the degrees to prove it, and I think the board can throw this, as Ms. Satterwhite said, at your discretion to a certain extent, to help determine what the level of offense rises to in your 12 years in this county, and your doctorates to go along with it. So that's, I'm perfectly comfortable with that. Ms. Jessie.
I think I wrote in my comments that with the discipline referral, that there should be some principal consultation. I think the principal in the building, who knows that kid, would know whether or not that discipline referral is something that should be considered. Because although Dr. Walts and all of us are learned people, we are not at that building, and we don't know this kid. Most of these principals will tell you, this is not what this kid normally does. They know their kids, and I think if we say discipline referral with principal consultation, or someone that he designates, it may be a counselor. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Deutsch.
All right, I get the point about tardiness and comparison to speeding tickets, but what we're saying here is that you could have a significant discipline referral and still be considered. Tardiness wouldn't rise to the level of a highly significant discipline referral. So I'm still trying to figure out what things we are saying are a type of discipline referral that would still allow you to be considered for the position, that we would still category as highly significant. Like, is there a middle tier of referrals that's not too significant to be outrageous, but still significant that we would delineate this as a significant referral, but not just a discipline referral? And I guess, I keep hearing through every amendment and discussion, oh, we'll just leave this up to staff, or, oh, this will just be interpreted, but we're creating a policy, we should actually work out the words. And I just, I don't feel like we're actually working out the words and making sure that they mean what we want them to mean.
The thing we have to be careful of is that we're creating a policy in order for the superintendent to create regulations. That's the body that we do. He gets down into the details of how this is executed. I think the board is pretty comfortable with allowing Dr. Walts to do this, so with no addition, I'm going to bring this to the floor. Ms. Satterwhite's amended motion is a student may have no more than one significant discipline referral and still be considered for a student representative. All in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you. Clicked on the wrong button, I apologize. Hold on. Got it right? That would have been awkward.
Vote is six yes, two no, Deutsch and Wilk. Motion passed.
We are back to the main motion with those two now passed amended motions. So back to the main motion with the adjustments, with the passed amended motions. Is there any further discussion on this? Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand.
Are we speaking to the main motion?
Yeah, I just asked if there was any further discussion on the main motion.
I was turning my mic on.
Well, I don't recognize mics, I recognize your hand being raised. Would you like to speak, Mr. Deutsch?
Yes. All right. I guess we've finally gotten to the main motion, we're working on all the wording. I'm still very concerned by only having one student. I love the idea of a student rep. I've heard about it when we were first running for office, I've talked to people about it throughout the whole time. But having one student rep for 89,000 students makes it very hard to really get a feel that we're getting valuable input that gives us kind of a comprehensive feel of the diverse student body. And I would love to see a proposal that actually gives us feedback from across the county, from across our high schools, and I think that would be incredibly valuable to us. But, you know, I think, as we've seen through all these amendments, we keep going, oh, we're just, we're going to specify things, but then leave the interpretation of the specificity up to staff. Yes, staff has leeway, but then don't specify if you want them to have leeway. So I think there's a lot of things that still have to get worked out, and, I mean, as a board, we still have questions, where are they going to sit? How is this FOIA process going to work? I'm still really concerned on the details and how this has been thrown together in a way that doesn't have school board members talking this out together. And I'm really concerned about not getting valuable feedback, and just the number of concerns that arise from only having this be one student.
Any further discussion? Ms. Williams.
I just wanted to mention that I share your concerns. I just recognize that we have to have a starting point for this, and it's not been done before. And the whole reason I brought it forth is because of that notion, I'd like to hear from our student body. And we don't have a specific way of doing that now. And I think that we're off to a good start, and this is something that I'm sure not only this board, or the superintendent and his staff, and future boards can always tweak as we go along. But I am just very passionate about trying to at least get this process started and see how it goes, because I think this is one of those situations where we'll learn as we go along, and our student feedback will be invaluable. And I also wanted to mention to you, Mr. Deutsch, as a parent of a 16-year-old, that I've recognized that while I believe, in my mind, a lot of times, that they don't talk to other kids across the county, they very much do, and are very passionate about their methods of communication. So I feel much better, and maybe I have a little bit of an inside track, because I have a 16-year-old, that whoever is chosen to be on the board will be in communication with other students across the county, and they have the means and the technology and the capability to do so and report back to us. So I hope that helps to alleviate some of your concerns, but I just want you to know that I do share some of them, but I think we should just get started.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Jessie.
Mrs. Williams and I both brought this before the board, but at the time, we said a student representative, and I agree with her that maybe, I think, we'll learn this year, and if we feel that there's not enough representation, we'll get feedback. I think the main thing is ask the committee to make sure we do get feedback as we go along. My concern was that we got, we have representation from, we want to hear the voice from students. And for me, it came when this incident happened at Woodbridge High School, and the parents came in, and we had this big meeting at this church. And the parents said, I talked to my child, and he said, I said, "What do you want me to say?" And he said, "Well, you didn't ask us anyway." And they are the kids who know. So that's, I think we'll tweak it as we go. So thank you very much, and I would like for us to go forward with the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Mr. Brown.
There was actually one recommendation that Ms. Satterwhite made, and the feedback that we provided, and this is just something to consider, or for staff to consider, and I really liked this idea that she had, was that if there are, there is one main rep, and there are alternates, you know, especially if one of those alternates happened to be a senior, and perhaps throughout a school year did not get an opportunity to fill in in a meeting or two, that there was something in place where there weren't just an alternate behind the scenes, and everybody got a chance to step up and kind of fill the role. You know, we don't have to put anything in the motion to state that, but I do like that idea of the alternates just not being alternates on paper, they actually perhaps will have an opportunity to fill in, if that opportunity exists. And, of course, it may, you know, students may get sick, there may be conflicts, these could be very busy kids with very busy schedules. So we definitely will need some alternates to perhaps fill in once or twice or more throughout a school year. We just, I just want to make sure that idea is thought of.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Ralston.
We're adding more and more things to this. At some point, we have to stop, either we're going to vote now, or we're not, and we're going to send it all back to the committee that started writing this to begin with. Because every time we come up with something new, or another idea, and I happen to agree with everything that I've heard out here. So it makes it very difficult to go ahead, because I got another one for you. I want to be a girl and a boy. How's that one for you? So at this rate, we will be forever trying to come up with something. The good intentions are paving their way nowhere. So where do we go from this point forward? I would, I have a suggestion, and I know this is not going to make everybody happy, but do you think maybe we need to take a little more time and let this be discussed out, because there are still members sitting up here?
You, ultimately, Ms. Ralston, if we call the vote, you can decide to take more time with a no vote, and that would be your say, to say, take more time to look at it. So that would be your way to do that at this point, so.
I can make a motion, but I, okay. If we think that we are okay, then I'll just, but I want you to think about it, because this is your last opportunity. Thank you.
All right, calling the vote. With the main motion, we are on to the main motion, that with the amendments that would be made, I haven't gone back into the main motion typically. Sean, Mr. Brown asked me this question earlier, and I think it's a fair question that you should, what we just discussed. Instead of going back in this long motion, everything's in the amended motions as proper. So the only thing I've added to the main motion is with the amended motion, so that they will be corrected. We've done that. That's consistent with the way I've handled that in the past, that way. So with that, we are on, we are voting now on the main motion with the amended motions that have already passed, just so we're all clear there. So those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you. Those opposed? Thank you.
Vote is seven yes, one no, Deutsch. Motion passed.
All right, moving on to board matters. I will start down to my far right with Mr. Wilk, remind the board that it is 9:10, and if we can be concise with our talk, we might be able to get out of here by 9:30. So, Mr. Wilk.
We just spent an hour talking about that. Okay. It was a pleasure to visit a bunch of my schools on the Friday before spring break. Real highlights, visited six during that day. We got to paint an Ashland art class, and participated in augmented reality. That's really cool with the tablets, and you look at these things, and they change, really cool. Also, went to Swans Creek, watched students get to silly string and pie. The new, actually, at the time, she was the assistant principal, Amanda Broe, as you heard, was recognized for some greater, for the assistant principal of the year in the country. But she is now the new principal, named new principal of Swans Creek. So it was cool to see her participate and do that activity. The kids had completed a certain number of, some score that they had received, and she made a bet, and they got to do that with her. So that's cool, and congratulations to her, and once again, congratulations to Barry Rosenberg for his outstanding 31 years of service to this school division. Went to Henderson, got to tour the new building that's opening next year, got to participate in the steam lab activity. Went to Montclair. Sadly, the day before I learned, another one of my principals is retiring. Long-standing Montclair principal, Ms. Solstice, who has been there for a long time, outstanding and dedicated public servant. We're definitely going to miss her, and we're going to be having another Montclair, another one of my principal town halls for hiring a new principal with Montclair next Wednesday night. Also went to Grand Park, good building, got to tour their reading club, and also was on the morning announcement, school event. And I started my morning, actually, at Forest Park, Friday of spring break. The seniors are, and the students were super energetic to be there, but I did get to go in and watch a movie in one of the social study classes. I do want to re-recognize, although Mr. Provencio is Minneville Elementary Principal, he is a Potomac resident. So, want to recognize him, and he lives in Montclair and his family for his outstanding award with the Washington Post. Sadly, not sadly, but I will be in a car 10 hours tomorrow, driving up to Michigan for my sister's wedding. I will not be at the ESSA event, but I do want to encourage everyone to go. It sounds like a great event, the town hall, and I think I'm done shorter than usual.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Mr. Deutsch.
I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Ralston.
May I help if I turn it on? Okay, well, once again, Mr. Provencio, I thank you very much for being the principal of Minneville. I'm sure the parents are quite thrilled, too. Now, I'd like to invite everyone to come and join us at the Blue Door Event, and that's the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Up, Washington, DC. We forget that we have the Boys and Girls Clubs all around us here in Prince William County. Well, as a member of that organization now, that, excuse me, I'm inviting you to come and see what all goes on, and all of the opportunities that students have after school in the summer, and whenever there's a recess time, and they're not in school. And the event is called the Blue Door Event, and it's Monday, April the 24th, at 5070 Dale Boulevard in Dale City. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I missed last meeting, but I did want to, excuse me, that was horrible. I did want to mention our trip to, well, the trip that I took with the, to my other board members to NSBA. I wanted to especially con- I wanted to especially congratulate Mr. Beach, and I, forgive me, the science teacher who present, co-presented with him, her name escapes me at the moment.
Sarah Gill.
Sarah?
Gill.
Gill? Yes, I wanted to congratulate them on their presentation, it was outstanding, and once again, made Prince William County look great. I wanted to note something that I didn't realize before, but we are so outstanding that I think it's been, I don't know, maybe 10 years, I think, Dr. Waltz, you said, almost since you've been superintendent, every year we've presented at NSBA. So for those who don't know, that in itself, I think, is an actual tremendous accomplishment, that we are selected every year, and we're regarded that highly as a school system, that we present at a national conference every year. And I don't, I don't know that we always tout our accomplishments as a school system in those areas, so I just wanted to bring special attention to that. And other than that, I hope that everyone had a good holiday, and I'm just going to keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank one of the parents that spoke tonight, and she was here for a long time, and then she, she did sneak out at some point, that was Kate Olson Flynn. I want to thank her for bringing up that equity topic, because that's definitely one that I've been hearing recently from folks that attend high schools in my, in my district. I've been contacted by some Stonewall parents recently that have some concerns. I know there's some concerns with some Princeville District High School parents. So when it comes to that topic of, you know, some high schools have some things and some high schools don't, it's definitely a topic near and dear to my heart. I was thinking back when she mentioned Woodbridge High School, where I taught from '99 to 2006. And when I was a student teacher there back in the spring of 1999, a very, very long time ago, when I was working with Ms. Mitchell in English 12, a very tragic day occurred tomorrow, the anniversary, 4/20/1999, which was Columbine. And I will never forget, forget that day, and I will never forget for spending the majority of those seven years of my teaching in a classroom that didn't have any walls. So for seven years, you know, we, you know, Woodbridge was one of those schools originally built with that great concept of open learning, so it didn't quite work out. So they had to go back and create these fake walls with no doors. So it worked okay, it was a little bit noisy, it was very difficult to teach in. But, you know, especially after that, that major event that happened that year, you know, I thought for, for seven years that I was a sitting duck, and anything could happen anytime. Thankfully, nothing did, thankfully, I'm still here. But, you know, I thought about that equity thing back when I was a teacher, you know, I was like, you know, why is Forest Park, this brand-new school, have walls and doors? And I don't even have one. And she did a bunch of chalkboards, yes, I definitely used those chalkboards, I actually liked using the chalkboards, I didn't get to use the fancy technology of today. But if there are inequities that we're not addressing, definitely, I thank her as a parent for bringing that up, you know, and I encourage any parent from any high school, if there's something that we're not addressing, please come to us and let us know, and we'll do our best as board members to try to address those. I wanted to say thank you to the advisory council at Chris Young Elementary School, they invited me to their meeting last night. I definitely enjoyed chatting with the parents, the staff members in attendance, and I want to thank Principal Notez for taking some time after the meeting to show me their steam lab, and she welcomed me back to see an action when the students are there any time in the future. The next joint county school capital process team meeting is this Saturday morning, bright and early, at 7:30 at Stonewall Jackson High School, we'll be meeting in the library. Hopefully, we can continue our great discussion and progress that we've made with our first couple of meetings, as we seek joint solutions for our schools in Prince William County. These meetings are open to the public, so if you're an early riser and you want to get up at 7:30 in the morning to see your school board members and board of supervisors and members in action, please, please come on out, we'll welcome you. I want to wish best of luck to the Patriot Girls Soccer Team tomorrow night. They are taking on the number-one girls soccer team in the country, which is Battlefield. So I am hoping that the pioneers will step up and pull the upset and take down the number-one team in the nation. We'll, we'll see if it happens, upsets can occur. And speaking of soccer, I, I do keep in touch with our elected school board member, Mr. Trinum. And unfortunately, he called me a couple Saturdays ago when I was watching my daughter's rec soccer team play. And I want to give apologies to Gill, because I was not very focused during that conversation. There happened to be some very horrid calls by the refs, because, as you may know, refs are not perfect. And as a former youth soccer coach and lacrosse coach, I've encountered many, I'll just stop right there, I don't want to criticize refs too much. But finally, at some point, Gill said to me, you know, I, I think I'm going to let you watch this game, and we'll just talk another time. And, you know, I, yeah, I happened to be doing a little too much screaming during the conversation, so it wasn't a very productive chat, but we'll connect again in the future. And definitely, as this school year is coming to a close, I definitely want to provide you some more upsets on how things are going for him across the ocean there over in Djibouti, Africa. He is ready to be home, and he will be glad to see all of you come the end of September, early October. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Your comments were entertaining, especially when you talked about tomorrow night's soccer game, but I'm not going to jinx anything, I'm just going to wish our Battlefield High School girls the very best in our soccer game tomorrow night against the Patriot High School Girls Soccer Team. With, I do have a previous commitment, as do several other board members. Tomorrow night is the Prince William Education Association ESA meeting, and I'm looking forward to going to that and hearing ideas from other people as we move forward with this new federal guideline. Input is wanted and needed, and so I'm looking forward to hearing what people have to say about that. I want to thank everyone at Tyler Elementary School for the warm welcome and for the, it was wonderful to hear kids playing with their orchestra and with their strings, and hear the kids singing along to the song as the, the slideshow was playing. We were there for the, Mrs. Hart and Dr. Waltz and I were there for the Tyler Elementary School School of Excellence Ceremony on Tuesday morning. What a great thing to be at an elementary school first thing in the morning when you're back from spring break, and everybody was jazzed, they were on a sugar high still, and it was very exciting. So the kids are energized for learning, some of them actually read of a break, some didn't, we encouraged them to work on that. And I want to thank everybody at Tyler for your hospitality, it's always a joy to be there with our Tyler Tomcats. And I'm looking forward to more School of Excellence events coming up. I'll be at Pennington School tomorrow, I'm looking forward to seeing them. And that's it for me. Welcome back from spring break, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Ms. Jessie?
First of all, I've been to several boundary meetings, as you know, you know, we're having additions in that, in the Lakewood area, and I just want to congratulate Mr. Cartridge, Dr. Cartridge and Mr. Beavers, who have listened to these parents and worked with those committees to come up with a plan. My goal is to make sure that no child who's presently in a school that's being renovated has to move out of a school, and to make sure that we kind of look at everything. And I think that they've looked at everything, and I know there's suggestions that are going to come here in May, but I want to thank them in advance that they, they handle these meetings in such a professional manner. And it looks like we're going to be together quite a while, because I'm on the side where the boundaries are going to be changed frequently. Went to West Ridge for their School of Excellence, it was excellent, it was held at night, and there were all kinds of activities going on, Dr. Waltz was there, and they had Author's Night and several activities. I want to congratulate, it was their 14th, am I right? 14th, yeah, 14th School of Excellence. I went to Old Bridge Elementary School, Virginia History, and I want to thank them for allowing me to, to teach about 125 kids in a, in a room. I tried to keep them together, but my status as a board member didn't help me. They did what kids do, they talked, but they also listened, and I think we learned a lot from each other. And finally, I want to say, and we talk about people in the room and equity and the fact that one of my parents came in to talk about Woodbridge High School, I've heard that before, and I am going to go over and visit. I don't know what's going to happen as we go down the road, as we look at different budget and our budget needs, but I just want to recognize the fact that we do have nurses in this room tonight, and you've sat through this long meeting, I think you deserve a raise just for sitting through the meeting. God bless you. But, but this is, this is a school system where if you do have an opinion, citizens' time in coming to this boardroom is what we do, and I just want you to know that you're welcome to be here, and that I did recognize that you are here. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. I was able to go to Osborne Park High School today to shoot the Borbury's video and, and talk with the, the Metal Jackets STEM team that's traveling to St. Louis this next week to compete in the world championships. Amazing stuff, they're way smarter than me, so I just smile and nod a lot as they explain everything. It's obviously a very wonderful thing, and Denise Carroll, their instructor and their leader, does wonderful things with their program, and so I wish them the best of luck. And of course, I gave them the recommendation, one of my favorite rib places on earth, so when they're in St. Louis, they can try Pappy's Ribs, if anybody's ever there, it's good stuff. So I gave them a good recommendation, that I think some of them listened and some of them didn't, but it's, trust me, it's a good recommendation. And then, last but not least, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Mulan is opening tomorrow at Gainesville Middle School. And it's, it's been voted the best show on Limestone Drive for the next, next three or four days. So I'm, my, my son is, is in the play, I think he, I think he says a couple words, which is unlike a Sawyer, so to only say a couple words. So hopefully, he sticks just to his line. So if you do find yourself out on the western end, feel free to, feel free to swing by and watch Mulan at Gainesville Middle School, there's plenty of shows online, and you can find all the details there. With that, and no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.